Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast, and I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting, please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating their name and address. Seeing none, Counselor Cruz, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag. The United States of America. And to the people for which you stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Counselor Cruz.
Here.
Counselor Gina Tally.
Here.
Counselor Fleming.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Here.
Counselor Squallia.
Present.
Counselor Van Hazenga.
Here.
President Zarella.
Here.
Counselor Boishman.
Right here.
Counselor Kuchar.
Here.
Counselor Cregan.
Here.
Thank you very much. The public had been advised to contact the Clerk’s office regarding any comments of no more than two minutes, and none have been brought to our attention. If there is anyone in attendance wishing to make public comment on any item on the agenda, please approach the podium, identify yourself by name and address, and indicate the agenda item on which you wish to speak, and you may then speak for not more than two minutes. We will begin with a report from the Appointments Committee. Counselor Kuchar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Appointments Committee met earlier this evening. We had one new appointment to the Water/Wastewater Commission, a Mr. Colby J. O’Brian, and he was term to expire February 1st of 2026, and he was approved unanimously.
We’ll accept the report.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, we’ll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, the report is accepted and acted upon. Report of the Committee on Records, Counselor Cruz.
Records appear to be in order. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the report of the Committee on Records. If there is no objection, we’ll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is accepted. Communications from His Honor, the Mayor. We have two reappointment letters. Ellen DiGeronimo to the Pittsburgh Historical Commission, term to expire February 1st, 2025, and Donald Ostrowski to the Pittsburgh Historical Commission, term to expire February 1st, 2025. One new appointment of Ms. Marshall D. Hayneson to the Pittsburgh Disability Commission, term to expire March 1st, 2025. Counselor Squallia?
Per our Council Rules 2.5, we are supposed to be provided with a resume for appointments at the time of the name given to the council, so I’d just like to remind, you know, whoever needs to get us the resume, that that is per our Council Rules.
Yes, that is the case. One moment, and I would note that we will not be able to act on this as the Appointments Committee without that resume being provided. Counselor Roishman?
I got one request. Once the committee votes them in and they, if they can come to the full council to the meeting, if they go on after they get appointed from the committee, we’d like to meet them. I mean, some of us can’t make the Appointments Committee, and we don’t even get to see them, to see what they look like or who they are, and that.
It is at the discretion of the nominee to attend or not attend. Certainly, they’re always welcome, and it’s always good to have them, but I understand sometimes they can’t make it, or it’s just inconvenient for them, and, you know, attendance at the council is not a part of what they are signing up for, so it’s up to them.
Okay. Just gotta ask.
All right. We also have the proposed American Rescue Plan Act budget. That is matter for the Finance Committee.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I would like to have, I’d like to know if we can have, this is a very hot issue, I feel, and I really think that that one and the other one, the funds that from the free cash go to the full council as a whole, so we can debate it at a full council, rather they go to a financial, I think it’s too hot of an issue and too very important.
So I have a motion, was that a second? Okay, I have a motion and a second to send the ARPA budget and 02522 ordered that there be and hereby is appropriated the sum of $480,000, same to be charged against available funds and credited to employee benefits COVID premium pay. The motion is to send both of those to council as a whole. This will be in the nature of a suspension of the rules, so Madam Clerk, would you please call two-thirds roll call?
Counselor Cruz.
For clarification, is this voting to send it to council as a whole?
Yes.
No? Or suspend the rules?
Suspension of the rules. I just wanted to make sure.
So that was a no?
To suspend the rules? I’ll vote yes to suspend the rules.
Well, this is a vote to suspend the rules by sending it to council as a whole.
Thank you, no.
Okay, so that’s a no.
Thank you for that clarification.
No problem.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
No.
Counselor Squallia?
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazenga?
Yes.
President Zarella?
No.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar?
No.
Counselor Cregan?
No.
The motion does not carry.
What was the final tally?
It’ll be five to, five to five.
Five to five, okay. Motion does not carry, though the ARPA budget stands referred to the Finance Committee. Report of the Finance Committee. This would normally be Counselor Gina Tally. He was unable to attend and asked that I chair the meeting in his absence. The committee met on February 8th. We took up a total of three items. 01222 ordered that the City of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of funds from a contribution from BOT Realty LLC in the approximate amount of $21,500 for the purpose of said grant, which is for the paving and reconstruction of Perkins Street. That was amended just to change the word grant to contribution, and then unanimously passed. Counselor Green?
Motion that we approve the Finance Committee report.
Second.
Second.
All right. If there is no objection to waiving the reading, then I have a motion and second to approve the report of the Finance Committee, all items as amended. If there is no objection, then it is approved. Next, we have a public hearing. This is on 00722, the Pittsburgh Redevelopment Authority along with consultants from BSC Group to present the 2040 Downtown Pittsburgh Urban Revitalization and Development Plan as outlined in the enclosed petition. I now declare the hearing open. And, and, yes, you may present when ready.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. Thank you for having us here tonight with a public hearing to review and update the Urban Revitalization and Development Plan. For those of you that don’t know me, and I think most of you do know me, but my name is Megan Donahue, and I’m the Executive Director of the Pittsburgh Redevelopment Authority. To my right, here is Dr. Laura Bayless. She’s the treasurer for the FRA. She’s also the liaison to the Urban Renewal Plan planning sessions, and on Zoom, which we can’t see her, we have our consultant from BSC, Heather Gold, and she’ll chime in when probably the presentation is over, because we can’t see her. So, the Urban Renewal Plan is what the FRA uses to set the tone and provide guidance for a period of 20 years, so tonight, we are considering having the plan approved to go forward into 2040. The FRA began discussing updating the plan in early 2019 ahead of its expiration date in 2020, and eventually hired the BSC Group to work with the FRA to draft an urban, excuse me, an update to the plan. Since then, they have worked diligently to devise a comprehensive plan that aligns with many of the city’s initiatives. It has been truly a collaborative experience from the start with incorporating Tom Skorsky, who’s here tonight, the Executive Director of the Department of Planning and Community Development, in our meetings and planning sessions, and we also had an 11-member Citizen Advisory Committee who provided insight and incorporated many community, who, sorry, incorporated community members who have grown up in Pittsburgh, those who just moved here, those who work in the city but come out from out of town, and there was a wide spectrum of ages and backgrounds that were represented on that committee as well. We also tapped into the university and interviewed the Student Senate to get their thoughts and recommendations, and we presented to the city’s Economic Development Task Force, the TDI Partnership, and all of our meetings were open to the public and foreposted with the city clerk. This evening, you’ll hear many of the BSC Group’s findings and recommendations, some of you for a second or third time, as well as the next steps in the approval process. Tonight, we asked the City Council to consider a vote to approve the plan after hearing our presentation, and then at the end, we’ll have time for questions.
Again, I’m Laura Bayless, and I’m really happy to be here to assist to present tonight as a board member and as the liaison to the Community Advisory Committee. Tonight, we’re going to focus on letting the City Council know of the Urban Renewals Plan purpose and requirements. We’re going to introduce some details about the Urban Renewals Plan’s history, boundary, public improvements, acquisitions, proposed uses, and we’re going to take a look at the goals and the objectives of the plan. We hope to answer all your questions so that we can leave tonight with your endorsement. So, this will not be a surprise to you that an urban renewal plan has many benefits. It attracts public and private investment, it stimulates economic growth, increases a tax base, creates local jobs. It also facilitates things like land acquisition and land assembly when it’s needed and appropriate. It allows the Redevelopment Authority to negotiate for acquisition of identified parcels as well as sale properties as appropriate, and it’s designed to support new development by identifying upgraded and expanded public realm and infrastructure needs. There are in Massachusetts a number of requirements for an urban renewal plan. We hired the BSC Group to assist us in designing and creating the next draft of our urban renewal plan. So, here’s just a quick summary of the requirements. We have to determine the eligibility, the area of eligibility, by performing a needs assessment, and then map the boundary. Within those boundaries, decadent properties are identified as eligible according to MGL 121B, so decadent properties are ones who are in disrepair, in arrears for taxes, foreclosure, irregular lot sizes, obsolete, just not being used well. We also were required to and did gather meaningful public input by forming a Citizen Advisory Committee, and they assisted in determining the boundaries and helped form the goals and the objectives that are the cornerstone of the plan, as will be discussed later on. We also held a public meeting on January 5th, and as a result of all these discussions and research, in collaboration with the city, a plan of action was created, including a list of goals and objectives, a concept plan, proposed public actions, and a financial plan. The Planning Board endorsed the urban renewal plan, and here we are for final City Council approval. After you all are finished and the FRA, like, does the final vote on it, it goes to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development and through the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act.
So, the FRA adopted the 20-year plan in 2000, which through obtaining an extension through the DHCD or Department of Housing and Community Development, it is set to expire at the end of March. Yes, this is a 20-year plan, but it’s also a dynamic plan, and that it’s, what we wanted to show here is that it is able to change. It’s not something that gets written and then put on the shelf. So you’ll see that we’ve amended through the years the plan eight times, and our most recent one happened last December where we put 808 Main Street in the plan to maybe purchase or do some sort of redevelopment, but we wanted to identify it in a plan as an identified property. So you’ll see, we have eight throughout the 20 years, so yes, it’s a fluid plan. And we wanted to highlight this to show you that based on market conditions or through the partnership with the city, the FRA has been, and will be able to amend the property via the approval process through DHCD. But we also wanted to mention that the approval process for minor plan changes such as adding a property to the plan like 808 Main requires a vote from the FRA and approval to DHCD. However, for a major plan change such as what we’re proposing tonight, Amendment 9 must also obtain approval from City Council. Keeping that in mind, we are seeking an amendment to the 2020 plan known as Amendment 9. This would be a major plan change because while many objectives were accomplished in the original plan, there is still work to do, and we want to build on the momentum and the progress made by the FRA. Many of the updated plan’s visions will incorporate largely the same vision, goals, and objectives. The items that have changed in the plan include boundaries, designated acquisition parcels, allowable uses, and certain plan acquisitions. In looking at the original plan’s boundary, you will notice the areas encompassing Pittsburgh State University. I don’t know if my cursor will. Oops, oh, sorry. Nope. Anyway, I don’t have a laser pointer, but you’ll notice the areas encompassing Pittsburgh State at the north of your screen there. Pittsburgh State University, the intermodal station to the south of that, and Sawyer Passway, moving west, Putnam Place, and Crocker Field. Taking a look at the changes to the boundary for the updated plan, you’ll notice the original boundary in dark blue, but you’ll also notice in the other colors, in teal and a red, the changes. So the red area is the Pittsburgh State University area, and that is going to be eliminated, and, but we’re still incorporating a little bit up in North Street, including where the fire station is, and in that area where, like, Day and Main is and things like that. We’re also including where Long Show Middle School is, and we are expanding our boundaries east and west to incorporate our gateways, as we’re calling them, and that’s on River Street and Water Street. So, when you strip away the former boundaries, you can see the wider plan that includes the downtown area, north of Main, and extensions to Water and River Streets, and that we’re calling the gateways. On this slide, you will see the proposed public improvements, including a potential trail, shared bike lanes, just to name a few, and these show that we are in support with the various projects happening in the downtown core. We also understand that this will require coordination amongst all parties involved, even if it just means the FRA takes a supportive role because we are here to help after all. We wanted to take a deeper dive into property acquisitions. First of all, the properties, all the properties considered for the acquisitions plan, the acquisition plan must be identified as so in the plan. Not all properties in the plan will be targeted for acquisition or acquired. Not all properties that are acquired will be taken through the process of eminent domain. It is very important, and one of the reasons why we are a quasi-government agency, to note that the FRA may negotiate for a purchase and sale of a property identified in the acquisition of it, in the URP. No public bidding is required, which allows the FRA to operate on a level playing field with the private sector in the acquisition and disposition of a property. When and if a transaction takes place, two independent appraisals are performed to ensure fair market value. Finally, a relocation planner is required, which is an additional protection for the impacted property owner and/or business. Also, DHCD is involved in the process from start to finish to ensure proper steps are taken to acquire and dispose of the property. Or dispose of the property. On this slide, here’s the acquisition list through Amendment Number 8, our most recent amendment, which included 808 Main and the former, which is the former Sentinel Building that you might be familiar with. You’ll notice in the pink, those properties have been removed from the plan, while the purple shade indicates they’re no longer in the urban renewal boundaries, they’re, I guess they’re kind of gray on the screen, for, in terms of, they’re removed and no longer a part of the new plan for 2040. And because we’re requesting an amendment to the 2020 plan, even though it seems like we have an entirely new plan, those that are on the list that are not highlighted are still part of the acquisition list from the 2020 plan. On this map, you will see the properties the FRA has set their sights to. You will notice the new urban renewal boundary with the parcels outlined within it. The light green focuses on partial acquisitions, while the pink focuses on entire acquisitions for redevelopment, the teal focuses on acquisitions for rehabilitation, and the dark green shows acquisition for open space. The remaining parcels identified within 2020 plan, as I identified in the previous slide, are not highlighted on this map, but will be highlighted in the final draft. And here’s a listing of all the properties highlighted from the previous map.
Wow.
The three on the left are related to open space, while the listings on the right are related to the assemblage to suggest larger development projects. It’s important to know that the FRA contacted all the property owners ahead of when we began the recent public meeting process. We had on January 5th and with the Planning Board on January 25th. And here is a proposed concept plan where nuggets throughout the boundary have been identified as spaces that intend to spark development around these sites. The emphasis is on the properties throughout the district that are mostly vacant and provide opportunity for larger assemblage. At the time, these concepts incorporate, at the same time, these concepts incorporate the objectives outlined within the plan, including housing such as transit-oriented mixed-use development on the corner of Oliver and Main, and, I’m sorry, I can’t point to those, or along River Street, our Western Gateway, which it shows a mixed-use development on the site of the former plaza that burnt down across the street from Dairy Queen. Also, connectivity to the Nashua River with green spaces and an east-west walking trail that connects Crocker Field to the Twin Cities Rail Trail. And speaking of the Twin Cities Rail Trail, if you go to Water Street, another gate, one of our gateways, the concept illustrates a welcome center at the site of the current Pittsburgh Flea Market. These are not set in stone, I just want to say, they just give an idea of what could be, and we think it’s pretty exciting, so.
All right. We have mentioned a couple of times the eligibility designation. We have to meet the decadent area criteria, and we must make sure we’re planning in alignment with the vision and plans in the City of Pittsburgh, so we’ve taken into account the Comprehensive Master Plan, the 2018 Development Strategic, Economic Development Strategic Plan, and the Open Space and Recreation Plan of 2014 to 2021, and the Planning Board just endorsed our eligibility. Great, that’s great. We mentioned, have mentioned a couple of times the goals, and that’s one of the important pieces of an urban renewal plan. There were many aspects that were retained from the previous version and Amendments 1 through 9, so things like revitalizing Main Street, fostering a vibrant and inclusive community, implementing a housing strategy, and enhancing the downtown presence of Pittsburgh State University. And our Citizens Advisory Committee helped us create some additional areas of emphasis for this year. So, strengthening connections and access to the Nashua River was something that they added. Building a green and equitable downtown, attracting tourists, and it’s not really new, but they wanted to particularly emphasize relating the plan to the city as a whole. We have one slide for each of these goals, just to tell you a tiny bit more about them. So the first one is revitalizing Main Street. We want to promote an 18-hour mixed-use district and contribute to a really active streetscape that highlights a wayfinding program that’s really walkable, accessible, and very safe. A financial assistance program to attract businesses to vacant ground-floor commercial space, to revitalize that, and to develop a reputation as a center of outdoor recreation and cultural activity. The next one is improving the downtown business environment. We want to have a really diverse mix of businesses that facilitates the redevelopment of significant vacant or underutilized properties. We want to make sure that there’s a strong relationship between the Pittsburgh Redevelopment Authority, the city, and the business community, and it may include some things like business assistance programs that are incentives to the downtown businesses, and we really want to support entrepreneurs and local startups like pop-up shops and restaurants.
Number three looks to foster vibrant and inclusive community, including working with local community groups, celebrating Pittsburgh’s diversity with various groups and businesses, creating a marketing campaign for outside interests of unique groupings of ethnic businesses, promote downtown as an age-friendly district, such as offering special events for FSU students and senior citizens alike, and increase community capacity and anticipate, plan for, and mitigate risk, and seize opportunities associated with environmental and social change.
Another goal is infrastructure, oops, sorry, go ahead.
Next, we will work to implement a housing strategy, including promoting transit-oriented housing development, offer mixed-use income, mixed-income and mixed-age housing opportunities. We will identify locations in the downtown for multifamily and mixed-use housing and market the sites to developers with appropriate expertise. We seek to improve the quality of housing stock downtown, and we want to promote affordability of housing in Pittsburgh with the primary focus being on the downtown housing stock.
And I know you’ve been waiting now for the infrastructure improvement since I started that. We’d like to increase accessibility to the downtown from all modes of transportation, and make sure that the rail trail is connected to the downtown corridor. We want to add traffic calming and pedestrian and bike-friendly streets, and activate, again, ground-floor activity spill out from businesses. We’ve got those great wide sidewalks in many places, maybe we can make good use of them, and of course, continue to implement parking strategies. The next one is strengthening the connections and the access to the Nashua River. So, our plan is hoping to add green space, open space, and trails that are going to connect Main Street to the river, considering a shared-use path along the Nashua from the Twin Cities Rail Trail, steward the national environment, including volunteer opportunities and educational opportunities, showcase the waterfront downtown, and then strengthen the visual relationship between downtown and the river.
Next, we seek to build a green and equitable downtown by, am I on the right one? No, sorry. I jumped ahead. Next, we, I’m lost here.
It’s 24.
Thank you, I’m sorry. Next, we will seek to build a green and equitable downtown by implementing a nature-based solution. Oh, I’m on the wrong slide, I’m sorry.
There you go.
Thank you. To aid in flood protection around the Nashua River, promote sustainable transportation and mobility options, and green energy, including efficiency in building construction. We also seek to build upon our already successful brownfield program by continuing to identify to remediate brownfield sites and to protect public health, environmental justice areas, and we plan to meet, to plan to commit to a plan of action that meets the needs of the community sustainably and equitably. I think I’ll go back and...
Nope. Next, next, there you go.
There you go. I’m on the right way, I’m sorry. The BSC Group met with the University’s Student Senate and learned that a university town is highly desirable among students. We will also continue to embrace the university’s presence in the downtown by assisting and growing the educational sector to embrace all ages and skill sets to compete successfully for jobs. We would like to strengthen the relationship between the university and the downtown through active participation of projects of mutual interest, also create ties and connections that make the choice of leaving a bit more difficult after graduation through employment opportunities, entertainment, and affordable housing options. We also would like to educate students about downtown and encourage them to come on down and utilize the businesses, events, and volunteer opportunities, and we want to make it easier for students to travel downtown with upgrades to lighting, signage, shuttles, and bicycle amenities.
Two more. We’re almost done. The next one is attracting tourists, and there are a number of targeted groups of tourist... The next one is attracting tourists, and there are a number of targeted groups of tourists that we think might be really, really targeted for Pittsburgh. Family-friendly venues, recreational tourism, public art and placemaking, we've got some really good inroads on that already, with temporary and permanent installations, creating a marketing campaign to kind of boost the visibility of the city of Pittsburgh, and then creating downtown lodging opportunities. And then the last one is, again, relating the plan to the city as a whole. So we would want to continue the partnerships with the city, the partnerships and the coordination with the city, to make sure that we're achieving the revitalization of the downtown in a really thoughtful and meaningful way.
So what are the next steps? We have held our meetings with the public. We met with the planning board on January 25th and determined through a vote that the plan aligned with other plans within the city, including the Vision 2020 Plan and the Economic Development Plan of 2018. Now, we are in a period of requisite local approvals, including the public hearing with the city council, and then next we go with, to the FRA to make the final vote. From Pittsburgh, it will go to DHCD for review, who will have 60 days to do so. Concurrently, the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act, or MEPA, will also review and issue a certificate from the secretary and obtain DHCD approval. And with that, we'll open it up to questions.
All right, I believe first I had, well, first of all, thank you for the presentation. And I believe I had Counselor Krieger first up? Did I see your hand early in the presentation?
No, I'm still mulling over my notes.
Oh, okay. In that case, Counselor Green.
Well, thank you. I appreciate both of you so much taking the time to do this, and more importantly, educating us on what that means, not only for today, but the future of this community. With that being said, forward-thinking that this isn't a plan for 2022, this is a plan to continue to move us forward. So I have a couple of just points and observations that if you could speak on, I would appreciate. Does the new acquisition for amendment number nine actually include the Nashua River itself?
No.
Okay, so we're still talking about just our boundaries right up to the river and nothing to do with the river itself?
No, we want to highlight that it's a feature in the city, and that will be done through acquisitions along the river of green space and promoting a walking trail from east to west, but we're not acquiring the river itself.
So we're not forward-thinking about how we could utilize, and again, this may be a pipe dream, but utilize the river as a means of economic development, tourism, and attraction? There's communities in our United States that have dug and made man-made rivers that have created their sense of place in their community. So I didn't know if we were, if we don't have the ability to do that, that it would impact further down the line, if we don't have the resources from up the river that we would need. I'm thinking of, you know, paddleboating, White River rafting, you know, bouncing along in an inner tube, something that would generate us here in Pittsburgh that would make us unique from all the other communities that surround us.
Sure.
Second, the comment about the shared bike lane, with us getting ready to go into the development of a two-way or a one-way each direction on both Main and Boulder Drive, how does that impact that shared bike lane?
I think we're going with, we're identifying that we're in concert with the planning that's already going on with the two-way Boulder Drive project, and it's part of the Complete Streets program.
So that it would be useful to then have a designated bike lane on Main Street and on Boulder Drive? Is that what the plan is recommending?
Yes.
That we actually incorporate a shared bike lane onto our Main Street and our Boulder Drive?
I can try to go back to, so...
And it's a, it would be ideally like a connection to the Twin Cities Rail Trail, and then also whatever ends up happening in terms of pathways and those sorts of things by the river. So there are options for what it might look like as all the plans develop, but it is designed to be centered in the city and also connective.
Okay, so not necessarily on the road, on the road as we know it? Or is it, in your plan?
Both, I mean, it's like what Dr. Bayless just said, but also we want people to utilize the green spaces that are already existing in town, probably through, some through acquisitions, some through existing parklands. So, you know, Cracker Field, jumping to a little space that's, I can't think of the street, it's Circle Street, go up there, and then you go up to, the park's up on Main Street, and then you make your, you kind of hop your way, like in Boston, there's the Emerald Necklace. We're kind of envisioning a mini version of that.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
A couple of other comments and concerns. How will the new acquired properties be impacted with the new road and infrastructure projects on Main Street, Boulder Drive, and River? I know that we've, you know, we've got a complete change to how we traverse around the Boulder and what that means for people getting on and off of both Main and Boulder. Are any of those new properties that you have set forth projects happening at, is that going?
Well, I think...
Have you taken into effect all the infrastructure and roadwork and demolition and all that that needs to happen to make our Main Street and Boulder Drive? What we committed to do to that project?
So I think what we do is that we look at the market at that time, so, and we also look at the climate of the downtown at that time. So if there's, you know, infrastructure improvements going on, we're not going to necessarily start a project until it's finished, or we might buy a property and then wait till it's finished. But I, but we are very targeted based on the properties on the plan as to what we want to buy, or acquire, I should say. And that is through conversations with the city already and things like that. So we've worked on the, what we're going to buy or acquire or dispose of through many conversations already. So we haven't thought about the infrastructure improvements because it's short-term. We feel like it's short-term, but the downtown is what really needs to focus as a whole. So, I mean, it doesn't just incorporate the two-way Boulder Drive project, so.
My last comment has to do with the improvement of downtown businesses, improvement downtown business environment. And I guess I still have questions about if we as a city or community development or housing or FRA has been in contact with the management of Pritchard Place Housing and...
Of what?
The impact of that.
We have not. You mean the housing authority?
No, Pritchard Place?
Oh, no. I mean, well, we contacted them to let them know that the property's been identified in the plan.
Okay. On a property that through this may mean some major improvements to our downtown and to our businesses who at times struggle with that property. So I just want to make sure that we're all well-representative of, again, not a plan that takes place for 2022, but a plan that takes place for 2030 and beyond, that we have, that we've included all the players, that we let everybody know that, hey, we've identified this and that we need to make improvement, not only to our, to our own community, but you as a part of our community need to be part of that as well.
Absolutely, and we want to work with people first before we do anything.
Yes, I commend that because that's not always an easy effort to do. So I commend all the work, and I'm looking forward to even these little micro projects that we can see sprouting up. So thank you for your involvement and your continuation to be a great business partner with us.
Thank you.
Counselor Squalia?
Thank you. I attended the public meeting, and what I really appreciate in this presentation compared to the public meeting is, my main question there was, how does this proposed plan relate to our previous Vision 2020 urban redevelopment plan? And this presentation really clearly shows that, so I really appreciate it. Thank you. Now, just a couple questions and points. The Vision 2020 Plan, this new plan goes for 20 more years, so it's 2042? Is it, is the name of it the Urban Rede-, the Downtown Urban Redevelopment Plan Amendment Nine? Or does it have a catchier name like Vision 2042?
We can put a catchier name, but right now it's the Amendment Nine.
And the, within the urban redevelopment plan boundary, there are identified parcels that you are, after, this is approved by DHCD, you're then able to negotiate or work towards the sale of.
Yes.
But if you wanted to add a property in the future, as long as it's within this boundary, that could be added as, that property identified could be added as an amendment in the future?
Correct.
All right. One question I had on the fair market value on your slide 11. You can negotiate after you identify the property and it is approved, you can negotiate with, after determining fair market value? My question is, is there a certain limit to that, above fair market value that you are able to acquire property, or is it just per the vote of the Pittsburgh Redevelopment Authority?
So there's a process involved. We have to get two appraisals, and whatever is, between those two appraisals, that is what we can offer or sell out. So we have that as a way to make it fair market. We cannot go above or below that, that range. So that, that kind of helps with the fair market value.
So you get two appraisals and you're bound to only accept a...
Something in between.
Something in between those two numbers. All right, great. And that's all I had, thank you.
Vice President Van Helsinga?
Thank you. And thank you very much for joining us this evening to talk through the plan. I think it's very exciting to learn about and think about all the possible projects we have for the agency to tackle over the next 20 years. But I was wondering if you could speak briefly about the projects you currently have underway or are planning to undertake in the more immediate future? Because who knows what's going to happen in 10 years and what the needs will be and what property, what projects will actually take place? But what are you planning for the more immediate future of projects in the city?
So I'm very excited to talk about this, actually, thank you for asking. When I first got here three years ago, we owned several properties, and in that time we have offloaded them, including 49 Snow Street, the parking lot back at the library we donated to the city. We also donated a small lot behind the church on Main Street next to CVS. We donated a small lot to them for actually voting purposes to allow for a precinct to reopen there. So we've unloaded those. We still have some properties that we own. We own a property in between, on North Street, in between a Red House and the Chicken Restaurant. It's a tiny little lot that looks like it's part of the Red House, but it's actually ours. We're holding on to that for, for a lot of reasons, but we've decided to hold on to that until market interest comes about. But here's what I'm excited about. We have a huge property, as you know, at Zera Airport Road. It's the site of the sand pits, and it's been used by the city for plowing purposes for sand and also dumping, you know, tree limbs and stuff like that for years, bless you. But we have entered into an agreement with GFI Properties who also purchased the former Simons property, and we have entered into agreement to sell that property to them for, they're going to build industrial park there. And we're just about done with the due diligence period with that, and after that, we will sign our PNS. And it's going to happen.
Is this, is this on this specific topic, or?
Yeah, it is on this specific...
Is that all right with you? Thank you very much.
Oh, I have, we're working on a lot of other projects, if you would...
Yeah, you'll definitely be able to continue. I just want to give the counselor a chance to ask a question if he has one.
You talked about the airport, the airport's my favorite subject. The airport, the industrial park that you guys are, were mining for sand and all that. I maintain my statement with Tom S. And the private of the sale that you want to make with Simons, I think one of the requests to be made that there be a road from Simons through that lot...
Counselor, Counselor, that was just an example of a project they're working on. We're not actually debating that project.
Oh, I know, but I'm just making myself well-known too, Counselor.
We are very well aware of that, and we've made that point to the developers as well. But we also, we are selling Building 3 on our property, and we are leasing land for 50 years to still maintain some revenue. And something I'm very excited about, as of two Fridays ago, we became the full owners of the John Sonya Lot at 520 Main Street. So we will be going out to RFP on that very soon. So those are some of our big projects.
Great, thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you. Counselor Krieger, was your question on this specific issue as well, or?
No, I just wanted to...
Oh, in that case, I have a few other people on the list before you.
That's fine with me.
All right, thank you. Counselor Fleming?
Thank you. A couple of my questions have been asked and answered, but what is the cost associated with this? Is there money that comes in grant money to, for this renewal? Do we use city money? How is this funded?
So we don't get funding from, so let me rewind. We used to get money from the state. All redevelopment authorities got money from the state annually, but that was sunsetted in 2017 or 2018. So we no longer get money from the state. We don't get money from the city unless we apply for their grant programs and things like that. We do get funding from other grant programs that are issued by the state, but our revenue comes from our tenants at 126 Boulder Drive and the sale of our property. So anytime we sell a property, we should use that money to buy another property, so.
Okay, so no way does this affect taxes?
No tax money involved at all, no.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Schultz?
Thank you, Counselor Ferrelli. I just wanted to tell Megan that I'm excited about the extension to Water Street and the gateway, I mean, the gateway to River Street, but really excited about Water Street and the gateway into our city. And it's been, it's been a long time, some of those properties really need to be redeveloped, rehabilitated, and so on and so forth. So I'm really happy that you're including the Water Street area.
Water Street, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cruz?
Yeah, I'm also very excited about this. I think you can see the work in the plan is there, you know, the big picture vision is there, and also the nitty-gritty has really been tackled. I was also with that planning board, and the growth is really there. I just have a quick question regarding Section 341 and the municipal demographics of the urban renewal area. The population size is generally lower income, and that's educated the residents within Pittsburgh. While the percentage of individuals below the poverty level in Pittsburgh is higher than state average, the percentage of individuals in the URA is three times the state average. That's your information. And my concern is, if there's been some talks regarding possible gentrification, this being a 20-year project, you know, it's devastating for lower income and people living in poverty. It's impossible for them to move. And I, there is something in there for your housing objective, Section 42, implement housing strategy, offer mixed-income, mixed-age housing opportunities, and you also promote affordability of housing in Pittsburgh. So although I didn't see any sort of language regarding gentrification in the plan, is this sort of that coverage there to make sure that we're not making our residents leave and devastate in their lives?
I think we will be very cognizant of that. I mean, our, the downtown for us is our fabric, and we want to keep the colorful nature of the business and residential community that is there now. We want to keep that, but we also want to build on it too. And we can do that equitably and through our programs, not only through that acquisition, disposition of lands, but in the plan it also outlines some other projects that we'd like to do, like provide internet to the downtown area.
I remember we talked about this, Pittsburgh Fiber, right, and equity, and it's to be on everyone's radar too, is Pittsburgh Fiber, a good group, is looking to provide high-speed internet and broadband infrastructure to downtown Pittsburgh, so keep your eye on that, everybody. I yield the floor. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Krieger?
Thank you. So I'm really delighted to see the scope of this report, and especially seeing the whole section devoted to Pittsburgh State University. I'm going to take this down. The, I remember, I mean, with the Vision 2020, our relationship with the university has gotten so much more robust in the last 20 years, and I'm really happy to see that reflected in the... reflected in the report. But one number I didn't remember from the 2020, Vision 2020 initial project was, how many potential apartments are there downtown? Because we have, you know, such a long downtown, there's both sides of the street, and there are buildings, and I'm now the chair of the City Property Committee, so I'm working hard to get up to speed on that. But do you guys have a sense of how many potential apartments there are?
In total?
It, it, just like, right, you know, within walking distance of Main Street, and I'm not going to hold you to it, it's just kind of for the view, you know, for the residents to get a sense of, you know, how much space there is, because there's a lot of space here.
I think Tom could answer that better than I could, so.
Okay.
So, our smart growth plan, which is basically our smart growth zone is our downtown, and in doing that, we had to show how many new units of housing we were targeting through that project. And so, I believe the number was around 24, 2500 units of housing that have been made available through that smart growth district. But, you know, that's not to say, of course, all of them are going to be built, but we certainly have a lot of potential.
That's great. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Was that all, Counselor?
That's it from me today.
All right. Anyone else? Counselor Boishman?
Got a couple of questions. My, two questions for you. I noticed that you had, on that chart, you had a couple of places that I know about, like you talked about the Sentinel Enterprise, buying that piece of property, and there was some, some others that I saw. What happens if I was a property owner and I don't want to buy? You take that property by eminent domain? No, yeah?
It, well, that's our last resort. If-
Even if the party doesn't want to sell, that's the way the city would take it?
It depends on the situation. I can't say that that's our blanket way of doing things. We want to work with the property owner before we do anything like that, but-
But we can come to an agreement. I'm not looking for an argument, Counselor.
Counselor, no, no, it's fine. I was just going to tell you, any eminent domain taking would come before us anyway, so.
We actually don't have to, sorry, Counselor, but we don't have to go-
Oh, for FRA, right, right, right. I, I, sorry.
Yeah.
I was thinking of the city.
And then my, my second thing is, on the bike trail, I, I like bike trails, I like bicycles on streets, but I really think that there's, should be a fast, a difference of separ- separation between a bike and a street. Like, I've been to Cambridge, where they actually got trails for bikes, but they actually, the cars can't touch them, and the people, you see more people driving them on that way than you do if you have it, like, on River Street. Very seldom, and I use River Street quite a bit, do I see a bicycle on River Street. Very seldom did I see a bicycle on Main Street. They used the sidewalk, but they didn't use the bike path that this city started and tried. So, if you had a separation of that way, I think I would be more apt to improve and say yes. But if we're just going to put a bicycle path on the side of a road and say, here you go, here's a bicycle path, and the cars are going to watch it, with all the distractions from cars day, I don't know if I would support that, because I'm really afraid, and I, you know, I would be afraid for the, of today or tomorrow, because people don't really pay attention. And if they were separated, I'd say, yeah, if the sidewalk was eight feet wide and you had a pot for a bicycle, all that, I'd be, I, I support that a happy, because I think there's a separation.
Well, know that it would be a concerted effort with the planning department, the DPW, all that. We wouldn't go in and say, we're going to put some bike lanes there. So, I mean, there's going to be input from various-
And the other thing I want to say about the river, Amy Green, the Council Green talked about the river. I'm all in favor of that. I think we should utilize it. I said it to Tom one time, we went to a meeting up there on West Fitzbury, and there was a nice piece where they started, the Medical Mall, one of the places, the facility on 437. And all that, you should have a nice pathway coming from there all the way downtown, because the river looks beautiful, but we don't take care of it. We got overgrowth, and you can't even see the river as you drive by. It's all bamboo, that bamboo, Japanese bamboo. So, how do you see a river? And, you know what I mean? We don't even take care of what we got, because we don't have the funds. Nothing against the mayor, we don't have the funds to do, to take care of it. So, you know, if we're going to be pushing the river, we should really start where it's wide open already and go right down, right down, and make it beauty, make it beautiful. You know, I mean, I believe the Army Corps of Engineers asked us to maintain the banks of the river, but we don't have the funds to do it. That would be it. My biggest concern was the, when you said, it stuck up in my head, eminent domain, and I'm not a fan of that. I think government's too big, but, all right, that's it.
All right. Anyone else? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Squalia, I did have you on the list here.
Thank you. Counselor Boishman reminded me of something else I thought of with the bike lane. I see that the proposed off-road bike trail, one of them goes behind the Rollstone Bank, and then it looks like it goes over the old Rollstone Bridge, the Parker Trust Bridge, and then onto Broad Street, and then it looks like it goes along the river. But that could potentially just connect to the River Street bike lanes. If, in this urban redevelopment proposal with this in, in place, is there opportunity for the Pittsburgh Redevelopment Authority and/or the city to apply for grants to rehabilitate that bridge, to make it-
Yes.
-a historical, you know, a historical marker, a historical bridge, and also a bike lane?
One of the conversations we had in many, in one of our many walks that we took around the city with a consultant who's still on, I hope, we saw that bridge. We think it's a beautiful bridge, and we think it has so much opportunity and potential, but it's decommissioned, so we would have to go for recommissioning it. Plus, I know that there's grant, well, there were grants out there a couple of years ago for historic bridges, so I think that would be something we could apply for that. I don't know if it's still available. When I was working in another community, I was, I applied for that for, so I hope it's still there. I just haven't done my research on it.
Thank you. I'd be very much in support of, of that project. I think that could be really instrumental to expanding the, you know, the recreational opportunity in the downtown. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. All right. And I apologize for not asking before council questions. I got things a little out of order. But is there anyone present here tonight who would like to speak in favor of this plan?
Tom Skarowski, Community Development and Planning for the city. Just wanted to be brief, but voice my support for this plan. The Redevelopment Authority and their board has been working hand-in-hand with the city for the last few years, and of course, the BSC Group, who many of you know, also put together our zoning, rezoning strategy that we worked 17 months with that team on and has many of the same players at the table for this Redevelopment Authority project. I think the alignment with all of our planning work and our economic development strategic plan and Vision 2020 is pretty clear. I think putting together all the pieces to figure out who's going to do what and how it's going to get funded, I think will really need to be a joint effort between the Redevelopment Authority and the city. But suffice it to say, I think it's, it's a great plan, aligns with everything that we're doing on a planning perspective, and, and I look forward to getting this approved, I hope, so we can get going, acquire more properties on Main Street and in the downtown to continue the work that we've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor?
Mary Jo Bohart, Economic Development Director. I wanted to commend the FRA for their leadership in updating this plan. I think we're very lucky to have an active redevelopment authority, but also our downtown district is greatly benefited by having such a plan overlaid atop the overall economic development plan. Businesses, investors continue to be deeply interested in our downtown, but the work continues. When we can show them that we have an up-to-date, future-minded urban renewal plan, it states this vision that really is appealing to those that are thinking of doing something, even though what we're doing is still aspirational in some areas. So, I think this is very important for our marketing of, of the downtown district, both to businesses that would come and also investors that would take on some of the buildings in a private sector way. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I was on the 2018 Strategic-
Can you just make sure you're speaking to the mic?
Oh, sorry. I was on the 2018 Strategic Economic Development Plan, and this addresses a lot of those issues that we brought up. It also, one of my, I especially appreciate that it addresses the gateways. So, it's a, I think, a well-thought-out plan, and I think it, it shows that the city's been working through the years on different committees. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in favor? Any wishing to speak in opposition? All right. If all have been heard, I declare the hearing closed. The matter is before the council.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. I have a motion and second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? None in opposition, passes unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, y'all.
Thank you very much. Orders finance, if there, since there are several, if there is no objection, I will waive the reading, and they will stand referred to finance. Solicitor Bruce Terry, do you have a request for suspension on any of these?
I don't have the number in front of me, Counselor.
Circle Street.
Mr. President, would you please suspend the rules on 2122?
I'm sorry, which one?
2122, which is going to be brought in conjunction with your-
Ah, for the executive session? No.
Oh, 2622?
2122.
Oh, 2122.
Oh, 2122.
Oh, 2122, which is-
Oh, I see, I see.
The Circle Street, so we need appraisals and some title work done for the Circle Street project.
So moved.
Excuse me, just a moment. I need to clarify first. So, you're asking that this be taken up tonight, or that it be sent to city property along with 26?
Taken up tonight. I'd like to suspend.
Okay. I have a motion for suspension. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second on the motion, Counselor Boishman.
On the motion.
This is only on the motion to suspend, so-
Oh, don't mind that. I was saying my question should have to-
All right. So, I have a motion and second to suspend.
Can we just clarify, is it just 2122?
Only 2122?
Yeah. Are we, are you requesting suspension on 2122 in preparation for the consideration of 2622 at city property, or suspend both?
I'd like to have suspension on both if you'd offer both, but the petition wasn't before us, so.
Well, all right. So, I have a motion and second for suspension on 2122. Would the counselor like to amend her motion?
Yes. I withdraw my motion and amend it to include 2622.
All right. And do I have a second on the, okay, I have a second on the amended motion. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squalia?
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
President Sorella?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Cregan?
Yes.
The motion passes.
All right. Solicitor Bruce Terry?
Mr. President, counselors, so if I could please address your attention to 2622. On behalf of our DPW Commission, I'd like to just inform the council that we're beginning the Circle Street Bridge construction project. It's going to require the use of eminent domain. It will be, at this point, based on the 25% drawings, 10 temporary easements for construction purposes and 10 permanent easements, which are going to be very, fairly nominal. Been tasked with some specific details from Department of Transportation in January, and they've asked us to meet a deadline of June 25th. So, this petition introduces you to the project, generally speaking. You'll see more detail come before you, and there'll be some more requests to suspend the rules, because DOT has us on such a short timeframe. We feel that it's very important to get in this current round of funding with DOT, because when this project is completed, we believe that the River Street construction, River Street Bridge that is critical for DPW to operate is going to be under construction, and we want this bridge open and up and running when that occurs. So, I did, just, if I can just finish my very short, one minute more of your time. The order for the financing is for the appraisal work and the title work. We've contacted a reputable appraiser, Howard Dono and Associates, who has done a lot of support for us. They do a dual appraisal process, you heard briefly described in your presentation. They work with DOT regularly. They're going to keep, help keep us on track, and that is, in part, the $10,000 quote, and the $700 is there, is for the title work to be done. Thank you.
All right. Just one moment, counselors. So, to confirm, just because I know one of my colleagues will have a question on it, 2622 is to, is essentially to authorize the process of exploring options to begin on these. The intent would be to get them as gift or purchase, if it can be negotiated, and only resort to eminent domain as a last resort.
Yes. So, you would not be approving the actual taking tonight, or the acceptance of any of the property, or in fact, the spending of any of the money to obtain that? This petition is truly just an introduction. If you look at Mass. General Law, Chapter 79, does say that the eminent domain process starts with a petition from the department head, and that's what you have before you tonight.
Excellent. Thank you. Then I have Counselor Green.
My question is, specific to that, is that are you ultimately asking for the easement to be gifted? Who has the easement now on that property, on that bridge?
Okay. So, I don't have my project sheet with me tonight. There are 10 temporary easements, and there are 10 permanent easements, and I believe that implicates approximately seven property owners, one of which is the city of Pittsburgh. So, we really have six or so constituents that we're going to be contacting in connection with either purchasing or taking by eminent domain their property. That process is going to follow fairly rigidly the federal acquisition guide, which does require a number of different notifications to property owners, including an introduction to the project. A public meeting with DOT has already hosted, a, a follow-up letter asking for a donation, and the next letter would be a letter providing them with a statement from our appraiser as to what the fair market value of the property is, informing them that we'll be taking it or asking them if we could purchase it from them. And then, if we can work out a purchase, then we will work out a purchase agreement with reasonable terms. And if we can't, then we would implement the eminent domain.
And if you can speak on, is this starting right at the beginning of Circle Street? Are those the properties that are going to be impacted right when you turn from Boulder Drive right onto Circle Drive?
Not going to be immediate.
Okay, so-
Not sure. Let me, let me say that I'm not sure. I do recognize that some of the names, I think, are, are property owners kind of right up towards the street, so maybe it could be almost immediate. Because there will be temporary easements, too, because we're going to need to occupy area in that vicinity for the construction purposes.
Right. I imagine that, what that means, I want the, I want residents to visualize what this means, because that's a tight spot to begin with, that when you do any construction, you've got to mine and undermine and dig beyond what you see that we would cross as a bridge. You know what I mean? There's underpinning, there's concrete, there's cement, there's steel. So, you're, you're literally asking these residents and/or business owners to be patient while you kind of take over the use of the property that they would normally have to come and go from their property as they please?
Yeah.
Okay. Will they, will they ever get their easement portion back, or once you take it, now they don't have any, now they no longer have the easement? Or once you take it, now they don't have any, now they no longer have the easement?
In the 20% drawings, which are subject to change, there are 10 permanent easements. So there will be 10 areas of the project in which the property owners won't get that land back. They're nominal amounts of area. And there are 10 which are temporarily designed specifically to facilitate the construction, just like you had, you suggested.
And just to clarify, Counselor, because we're talking about easements here, the property owners themselves will not lose the use of those segments, except perhaps as the construction itself blocks them. They will still retain their right. An easement is just sort of an overlaying right for the city to use it for a specific purpose, like maybe for travel or for, you know, to attach an anchor point to or something like that. An easement doesn't actually carve a piece off of the property.
And we're going to get this, we're either going to get, or Nick, just Commissioner Erickson recently got the 75% drawings and has not reviewed or approved them yet. But we're not going to really know the extent of those permanent situations until after the 75% drawings are approved.
Right. Thank you. No, I appreciate taking the time to explain that there were that many easements already in place. Yikes.
But it's pretty much seven. There'll be about six constituents that'll be impacted by the, by the project.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Squalia?
Thank you. I approve of these petitions and plan from Mast Dot. I attended the public hearing in October of 2021 for the Mast Dot Public Hearing Circle Street Replacement, and they identified the areas of temporary and permanent easements. And they are largely, the permanent easements are largely insignificant. No, no, no property owners attended the meeting. No property owners have contacted me with any concerns. There are temporary, there are larger temporary easements, but those are only temporary for construction. The largest permanent easement seems to be for the construction of a sidewalk that will be from Main Street to Circ, to Broad Street. That's the largest impact to the easement taking. And Mast Dot also did this public hearing virtually, so it is recorded, and you can watch it at the Mast Dot website to get updated on everything that they had presented to the public in October.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further questions from counsel? Counselor Boishman?
The only reason why I put my hand up first, Minnie, was I was surprised Circle Street was on there. And then when you started talking about River Street coinciding, because I was really upset when I read that, when I get the package and I saw it, I said, geez. I got, there's other bridges throughout the city that are just as bad conditionally in Counsel Kuchar's ward and my ward, the Rollstone, I mean Oak Hill Row Bridge, and then his bridge on Westminster Hill Road. And I said, from very little car travel on that street, we're doing this one first versus Oak Hill Road and West Fitzburg? I didn't understand it. I really didn't understand it. I still have a hard time doing, yeah, I was...
This one goes first, then the, then the, the River Street one, and then you got Water Street. You got the two Water Street bridges that are going to happen, so...
All right. We just don't want to, we don't, Mr. Kuchar, Counsel Kuchar and I don't want to be left out and say, we don't care about Oak Hill Road, and we don't care about Westminster Hill Road.
We're going to focus more on Counselor Kuchar's.
You did that to yourself, right.
I'm in agree, I'm in agreement with Counselor Boishman. The, the bridge on Westminster Hill Road, it has been, has been one lane for quite some time. And I would like, you know, some answers. I have not gotten any answers from anybody to say when that's going to be done, considering that when you, looking on top of the road, it looks fine, but when you look underneath, you kind of cringe when you go underneath, when you, when you go over it.
Yeah. Most of this is, what this project is completely being directed by DOT, so... So this project's being directed by DOT. So, I mean, you know, however they're prioritizing our bridges, you know, we're, we're really not in control of that, so. But noted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and second. And to clarify, this is on 21 and 26, Counselor?
Yes.
Thank you. I have a motion and second to approve 21-22 and 26-22. All in favor? Sorry, on the motion, Counselor Green.
I'm sorry, just for clarification. So by suspending of the rules and accepting, we're accepting as a petition, and then we don't have to forward it onto city property because we've already made that decision?
Right. That's what the suspension is for.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposition? None in opposition. Motion carries unanimously. All right. The remainder, 1922, 2022, and 22 through 25, 22, stand referred to Finance. We have an ordinance to 1921 in its final reading, amending Chapter 44, Section 10 of the Code of the City of Pittsburgh, as most recently amended, to be further amended by adding various COVID-related positions at fixed salaries as detailed herein. I'm not going to read them all off unless someone wants me to.
Make a motion to send to its final reading as amended to be enrolled, ordained.
Thank you. I have a motion and second to pass through final reading as amended to be enrolled, ordained, and advertised. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar.
Yes.
Counselor Craigin.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you. We have 027-22. Counselor Derek Cruz on behalf of Basem Awad, resident at 8 Boylston Street, to install a streetlight on telephone pole number four on Boylston Street. That stands referred to public safety. Counselors, I'm sorry, Counselor Green?
Yeah. Motion to send these to their assigned committees.
Second.
Yeah, so I'll take that as a motion to waive the reading. If there is no objection, we will waive reading, and they stand referred to their assigned committees. Next on the agenda, we have an executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. An open meeting on this subject would have a detrimental effect on the litigation or negotiating position of the city. And as Chair of this body, I do so declare. So I have to ask that everyone please clear the gallery. We will only be resuming open session for the purpose. Oh, actually, I'm sorry, I do need a vote for this first.
So moved.
I have a motion and second to send us into executive session. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar.
Yes.
Counselor Craigin.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you. So I do need to ask that everyone clear the gallery. Because we do not have full soundproofing in this building, I do have to ask that everyone actually clear the building. But we will not be resuming open session for any purpose except to adjourn, so you won't be missing anything.
Can I ask a question? On 29-22, is that going to be done tonight or...
29-22.
Unit two.
I don't actually have a 29-22.
That will be sent to a public hearing on March 1st.
Oh, it's on March 1st now?
Oh, excellent. I'm sorry, that was not on my printout by mistake. In that case, before we go to executive session, I'd like to entertain a motion for the 29-22 to be sent to public hearing on March 1st.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second, send it to public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None in opposition. Motion carries. It will be on March 1st. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I now declare this body to be an executive session, and we are going to wait for...